Good morning. Today is Tuesday, July nineteenth. And the time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us, if you could introduce yourself for the record, starting with Mr. Batista.
Bob Batista, Colito.
Bonnie Overville, recorder's office.
Dawn Bridge, clerk's office.
Sharon Roberts, trash billing.
Breach Kanute, assessor's office.
Calbra Elliott, honor of Little Pearl.
Bob Perkins, Ada County procurement.
Mike Worf, Ada County operations.
Josh Brown, Ada County operations.
Richard Back, development services.
Elizabeth Duncan, communications.
New Ikeet Diggar.
Beth Ma, treasurer.
Alyssa Ellington, Ada County procurement.
Bob Quade, assessor.
Trent Tripleclerk's office.
Well, thank you. Welcome. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, there are not.
Good. We have a number of unfinished business items. May I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
Mr. Chair, I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Good. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First, we have final ranking and award recommendation of RFP two-two-zero-six-five, Ada County Sheriff's Office Collection Services.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. The evaluation team for RFP two-two-zero-six-five has completed the evaluation of the six proposals for this project. And would like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Okay. Did you read the letter for the record?
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. So, "To dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two-two-zero-six-five. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of the evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, NRA Group LLC DBA National Recovery Agency with a score of eighty-four point six-seven. Number two, Cedars Business Services LLC with a score of eighty-two point four-four. Number three, IC System, Inc. with a score of seventy-seven point seven-eight. Number four, Collection Service of Nevada DBA Sierra Outsourcing Solutions with a score of sixty-two. Number five, Atlas Financial Services with a score of sixty-one point three-three. And then number six was Midwest Municipal Services LLC, and they were found non-responsive. It's the recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-two-zero-six-five to NRA Group LLC DBA National Recovery Agency as the number one ranked proposer."
Thank you. Any further discussion or a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to accept the final rankings for RFP two-two-zero-six-five, Ada County Sheriff's Office Collection Services, and accept the evaluation committee's recommendation to NRA LLC, and that's DBA National Recovery Association.
Agency.
Agency, with a score of eighty-four point six-seven.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have next the final ranking and award recommendation of RFP two-two-zero-six-six, Ada County Court Debt Collection.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team for RFP two-two-zero-six-six has reviewed the proposal submitted, and we would like to submit this letter with the evaluation team's recommendation for your consideration. Would you like me to read the letter?
Yes, please.
So, chair members of the board, due to recent information regarding the court debt collection contract and Ada County's relationship to the contract for RFP two-two-zero-six-six, it's the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the proposal submitted for RFP two-two-zero-six-six and have the fourth judicial courts handle the procurement of the court debt collection from hereafter.
Okay. Is there further discussion or motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to reject your proposals due to recent information and let the fourth judicial courts handle the procurement process thereafter.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We next have, this has been tabled several times, the trash billing services to do a suspension. We ask you to get some information. Did you get that information, Charles?
Yes, Chair, Commissioners and Board. Last time we met, you had asked a couple of questions, and I went to researching our payment history on this account. And I verified the last time this account paid for service was November twenty-fourth of two thousand fifteen. I then follow up with Hardman Sanitation for their service records. And the last record of, or comment on the account was two-eight of twenty-one, saying that it had been removed from the route because the house had never been serviced. So I feel like they were able to align that they've never paid for the service and they're not receiving this service. So I feel like good cause has been shown, and this could be approved. And the formal process is in place now for them to...
I would agree. Is there further discussion? Thank you. Thank you.
No, I'll go ahead and move to approve the trash exemption request as listed on the agenda.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chair. That's the information we needed. Okay. We have a homeowner's exemption recovery case, county error theoretically. Do we have a discussion?
Good morning, Board. I'm stepping in for Georgia Ann Bell, who's been the one directing this case previously. I'm not sure where it left off, other than additional information had been requested for service. I'm not sure what had been provided to you guys at this point. Typically, the assessor's office does take accountability if we would have been able to determine that this was county error. On our part, we believe it is. We would have been able to search by name to identify these individuals with multiple exemptions. So it kind of fell back on us that we did not follow through on our search.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I was, if you might understand correctly, that they did not, the applicant did not put their address on one or both of the applications?
That is correct. A previous address had been left blank on both applications for the previous parcel and the new one.
And is it our statutory obligation to correct errors on applications?
Correct errors on the applications? That is not something that is required. It is beneficial for our point of processing, but it is not something that's statutory required.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It was tabled to get the amount of what we would be building on, collecting, or dismissing. I didn't see it in the information that was presented.
And I do not believe, unfortunately, that is listed in this packet here. I'm sorry.
Let's go ahead and table it again. I think that's important.
I think that's important. I also think it's important to get further legal analysis for us to make a decision on.
What's a good date on that? Let's give it two weeks? Yes, to August ninth? Okay, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair. Move to table, homeowner's exemption recovery case parcel, R-nine-four-three-seven-seven-nine-zero-one-nine-two-two, August, what is it?
Ninth.
Ninth, for our next, that'll be our meeting for reconsideration.
Okay, thank you. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Second, aye.
Second, sorry. You've heard the motion. It's moving second. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, do you want us to contact legal or will your office contact legal for this?
Yeah, you can set it up.
Any.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. We have three resolutions this morning. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two-seven-six-six, a resolution adjusting the Ada County budget for American Rescue Plan Act fund budget. Is there further discussion on that item? Did you want to talk about it?
We are in the middle. We received our second tranche of our original award. So we're receiving forty-six million, seven-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifteen dollars for a total of, I can't read, I need glasses, ninety-three million and change. I didn't put the total in here. So we've already received the funds. They're sitting in our account. We just have to receive them officially.
Okay. Is there further discussion on this resolution? Okay, I'll accept the motion.
And to close the public hearing?
Oh, you're right. I'll close the public hearing on resolution two-seven-six-six.
And to approve the resolution.
And I'll accept the motion.
Yep, and to approve resolution two-seven-six-six as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Keep some readers here.
I do.
I will exceed. Next up, we have resolution number two-seven-six-seven. I'll open the public hearing on resolution number two-seven-six-six. Seven, resolution adjusting the Ada County budget to reflect the receipt of unscheduled revenue due to Ada County Emergency Rental Assistance Consolidated Appropriation Act. Is there any discussion on that?
That's also mine. I also do not have the entire total. But we received what was considered a third reallocation of federal funds in the amount of ten million, seven hundred thousand. So that brings up our total for ERA one to approximately twenty-one million, seven hundred thousand. That does expire in September thirtieth of this year. We do have an extension through December, which is likely, but not automatic. So currently, we have eighteen million dollars spent of these first initial ERA one funds. But it's a good chance we will return some of these funds, if I'm being honest. This is just another receipt of funds into our account, so.
Okay, is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two-seven-six-seven. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two-seven-six-seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We now have resolution two-seven-six-eight, a resolution for sole source procurement of Ada County jail roof repair. Is there further, I'll open the public hearing on resolution two-seven-six-eight. Is there discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have had some unforeseen issues with the new roof system that was placed on Route Section eleven at the jail. This is one of Josh Brown's projects, so I'm going to let him give you the details on what's going on.
It's all yours, Josh.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, last year, we replaced the roof on Route Section eleven. We removed an old ballast roof and put the new PVC roof. More energy efficient, and you know, the time to replacement have come. Once we replaced that roof, we discovered shortly thereafter that one of the VFDs or one of the exhaust fans in the RTUs wasn't working properly and was building up pressure inside the jail unit, which made the new roof become unadhere and start to balloon up. It's quite the sight. I've got some video if you want to see it. So once the roof becomes unadhered, we had to make a decision to reach out to the manufacturer and kind of discover, you know, what it's going to take to repair this and still have warranty. They gave us a couple of options. Option number one was to completely pull the roof off, start over again. That was a three-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-dollar project last year. And option number two was to ballast the roof. Go ahead and put rock back on top of the roof, weigh it down. And that's approximately sixty-seven-thousand-dollar option. The reason we're proposing an emergency sole source is because the roof is under warranty. We want to maintain that warranty. We went to the manufacturer. They're the ones that recommended it. And the second thing is, is the longer we allow that roof to balloon up, increases the odds of wind coming along, getting underneath the membrane, and literally ripping the roof off. So we need to expedite getting some material back on top of that roof, lay it back down, and we're going to fix that RTU. Own lead item, of course. We're waiting on fans coming. But we've been diligently looking for a solution to get this done quickly.
Yes, we have also had the roofing company come in and put roof vents in to try to allow some of that air out. But there's just too much. So until we get that...
How did this happen? Did we not get a proper engineer?
No, no, no. This was our existing air handler unit on the roof that has a power exhaust system. That motor for that power exhaust failed. And, you know, once we discovered that, you know, the only way we discovered it actually was because we started to see that little bit of bubbling.
Dang, our Dairy Gold would have had a new roof next door.
We don't want that. So anyway, that's the reason we need to...
And so you work with sole source procurement, and you'll be able to visit with people and say, what can we do to get this handled?
Well, we're going with the original installation, nation roofing, to maintain the warranty and, you know, so.
And just to be clear, this was no fault of the roofing company. This was because of a...
Failure of the...
...of that RTU.
Okay.
Yeah, building up air in the...
It's still repressurized underneath right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? If not, I will close the public hearing on resolution number two-seven-six-eight. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve resolution number two-seven-six-eight as listed on the agenda.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We got through three resolutions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to take up next license for Little Pearl Oyster Bar. I believe we have Mr. Elliott here. He probably doesn't need to sit through all of our procurement matters and whatnot, right, Mr. Elliott? I know you find this exciting, right?
Interesting.
So is that okay? I'll make a motion to...
Yeah, sure. We can move that up on the agenda, sure.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion to reorder the agenda. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Here we are.
Yep, Mr. Chair, I've read the letter from Ada County Sheriff Spencer Lay pursuant to, what code is it? Ordinance four-three-seven-A four. Looks like the, it's possession or transportation of alcoholic beverages is what it's related to. And I don't think that the charge that we're looking here relates directly to that. So I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the license transfer for Little Pearl Oyster Bars. This is on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second that, and I think maybe we could request legal. I think that's an ordinance worth looking into, revisit, see if there's any changes that need to be made.
Yeah, it's pretty ambiguous, but I don't think it relates to this.
Yeah, it doesn't relate to this. We can do that.
Legal, yep.
So I don't think that, you know, the situation as presented should be one where we deny somebody the right to run the business. I don't think one really has to do with the other, so I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Right.
You can stay the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, it's so much fun.
May I have a good morning?
Yeah, you too.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. We are now back to procurement. We're going to open up RFQ two-two-zero-two-two, Design Services for Expo Idaho Park Development.
Yeah.
Just can't see it.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think you said RFQ two-two-zero-two-two, but it's two-two-zero-seven-seven, just FYI. But, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received six qualification statements for RFQ two-two-zero-seven-seven. We've got Bonfire queued up here on the screen. If you're ready for me to open the statements, I will proceed.
We're ready.
All right. And, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the names into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the first submission is Burger Partnership, P.S. The second one is GGLO. Third is Port. Fourth is RIOS. Fifth is Rodney Evans and Partners. And then the sixth is The Land Group, Inc.
Okay, you'll need a date to table?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the evaluation team will need time to evaluate the qualification statements and we request that this be tabled for a shortlist recommendation to the August second open business meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll move to table the final rankings and request to enter fee negotiations. Well, no, this isn't fee negotiations, for the shortlist, or the motion's wrong, for the shortlist for RFQ two-two-zero-seven-seven, Design Services for Expo Idaho Park Development, August second, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. It's exciting.
Yes. We now have operations. We have a change order, number one, for Ada County Courthouse Roof Sections two-B, four-B, four-D, five-C, six. Replacement of Agreement number two-one-four-seven-five-one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is to return unused contingency funds. We didn't run into any problems when replacing the roof here on the courthouse. We're halfway done. There's still a lot more to go, but this is just simply to return those unused contingencies to the funds.
No bubbling here yet.
No bubbling here. It is ballast. We have rock on top of it.
Okay.
And that's a decrease of twenty-six thousand, seventy-three dollars.
Correct, yes. All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve change order number one, Ada County Courthouse Roof Sections two-B, four-B, four-D, five-C, and six, replacement twenty-twenty-one as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have a change order, Ada County Courthouse Section one-B roof replacement.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this project was happening simultaneously with the other roofs. And once again, no problems, so the full balance of contingency is being returned.
Thank you.
Twenty thousand is the amount.
Twenty thousand.
Mr. Chair, move to approve change order number one, Ada County Courthouse Section one-B roof replacement as listed on the agenda. Authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. In the second, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we've already done the oyster thing, Little Pearl Oyster Bar. And we have some catering permits and a new license and a license transfer. May I have a second to the motion if there's not any further discussion?
Now, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit, one new license, and one license transfer, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have Clerk's office.
Yeah, thanks.
We have with us today our distinguished, soon-to-be clerk, Trent Triple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, really, the only thing that's on the big horizon for us is, uh, budget presentation, the public bus, bu- budget presentation next week, so we're gearing up and getting ready for that. Other than that, everything is going smoothly within our office.
Okay, good enough. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, uh, we have Claims Journal. I'll entertain the motion on the Claims Journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, may I have a motion on personnel actions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have with us our distinguished assessor, Mr. Bob McQuade. Do you have any information for us?
Mr. Chairman-
Updates or any good news, bad news?
Update, um, I was, um, I was just, I found out last week that not all of the assessment notices were mailed out um, by the first Monday of June by statute, that's the, the statutory deadline. AutoSort handles all of the mailings for us, and individuals will get their assessment notices, it's just, it's mailed out. It's what we will do. There are some businesses such as a mortgage company. We will bundle all of the assessment notices and send those out in a package. Well, AutoSort, who does the mailing for us, they have to manually put that file, uh, through, run that file. They did not do that. So, we've got fifty-four businesses with about forty-four hundred assessment notices were not mailed. I talked to the tax commission. Is what we're going to do, and I've been working with legal, we've got a, a letter we're going to send out to those fifty-four taxpayers explaining to them that you're the assessment, the, the assessment notices, and you have ten days to file an appeal. If any of them-
Oh, no, we're not going back to being Board of Equalization if that's what you're getting at.
No, we might not have. Anyway, if, if any of them do want to, to appeal, Albertson's, I think, is one of them.
Okay, that's why the forty-four hundred, the number's so large.
That's right, yes, yes. If they, any of them want to appeal, the tax commission will reconvene
Oh.
The Board of Equalization again. I've talked to them about it.
Our Board of Equalization.
That's correct.
So they can't just go directly to them?
The Ada County Board of Equalization. Now, a lot of assessment notices go out online, especially the large ones like this, they receive online. So, we're hoping that maybe a lot of those people have, so it might not be as, as, as serious as we think it is. Anyway, I got a letter. I've worked with legal. We're sending something out, and, uh, just in essence, it, it says the notices weren't sent, uh, and you, uh, have a right to appeal, um, within ten days, and the tax commission will reconvene the Ada County Board of Equalization.
And that's what the statutes call for, is, is for the, the state tax commission to reconvene the Board of Equalization?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
And that's the sole penalty for the county for not sending out the assessment notices by, uh, timely?
That's, well, that's, that's my understanding. Um, I, I haven't looked to see if there is, you know-
But that's what the tax commission indicated to you.
Right, yeah. It was like, okay, here's what we need to do, reconvene the Board of Equalization. Mainly it's because, is to give these people the right to file an appeal.
Oh, sure, sure. Well, that's the whole purpose of it, yeah. And, and they have to reconvene the, uh, the-
That is correct, yes.
That comes from the tax. So we'll get notice from then. Can we invite them to participate if, uh, if, uh, they do send us a notice?
Sure.
Okay.
Bob, what would be the dates if anyone were to appeal that we would need to reconvene, based on your timelines?
Um, I, I don't have those dates. I've just, I don't have those, those dates. We, this letter is, we're going to get these out this week, and so probably ten days from the mailing of this.
You might want to check with Judy on our calendars because there's vacations in the summer. And we want to make sure that-
Yeah.
Yes, and, and they get ten days from the, from the date they get the mail, or the date it's sent out, I guess, to decide if they want to file an appeal, right?
Uh, it says you have ten days from the date of this letter.
Alright, they had a letter.
To file an appeal.
Okay, so if nobody files an appeal, then that's, then that's-
That's correct, yes.
If somebody does file an appeal, is there another timeline that we need to reconvene as BOE statutorily?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner, I'm not aware of that.
But the state tax commission has to reconvene the Board of Equalization.
Yes, they will do that.
And they don't necessarily set the dates. They just re, they just tell us to reconvene, correct?
That's what we don't know, it sounds like.
I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. Okay, well, we'll figure it out.
We will, yes.
Yes.
If somebody does file an appeal, your office could still contact them individually, like we do for all the other appeals, and still attempt to work it out behind the scenes before it comes to another hearing. Is that right?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's correct.
Okay, so hopefully if any appeals filed, it wouldn't have to go any further than your office.
No one has called. Albertson's isn't, uh, didn't call and say we, where our, are our assessment notices, and they typically will do. So, uh, who knows what the, this, the, the knowledge that these fifty-four taxpayers have.
We'll figure that out. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Yes, uh, no.
Okay.
Maybe.
Maybe. All right, well, thank you. Thank you. Well, we also have with us our distinguished assa-, our treasurer, Beth Mon.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. It's Treasurer's Office, pretty much business as usual. Right now, we don't have any significant mailings, unfortunately, or significant due dates, so, um, really, no updates.
You're not using the jogger much?
No news is good news.
Well, we're still using the jogger, but-
Not as much. Okay, okay. All right, well, thank you. Thank you then. Okay, we have, uh, um, the interim events at the, uh, at, at, at Expo Idaho, concessionaire agreement, and some commercial exhibitor agreements. Do we have any discussion or? Before I call for a motion? I'll call for a motion then.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the one interim event agreement, one concessionaire agreement, nine commercial exhibitor agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we're at, uh, Barber Park Education and Events Center. We have two, two, uh, agreements. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Events Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that.
Thank you. You've heard a motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We now have, uh, two agreements. Uh, Agreement number one-four-seven-one-five between Ada County and Fidelis Power Solutions for Emergency Service and Preventative Maintenance of the Sheriff's Office Uninterruptible Power Supply System and DC Power Plants. Is there, uh, any further discussion or a motion?
No, I'll go ahead and move to, um, approve one-four-seven-one-five. Uh, the agreement listed on the agenda and authorize the chairman to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We now have Agreement number, uh, one-four-two-four-six dash one dash two-two, First Amended to Subscription Agreement between Ada County and Navex Global for Software and Support for so, storing and distributing department policies. Do we have any further discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to go ahead and approve Agreement one-four-two-four-six dash one-two-two. Listed on the agreement, uh, as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, we now have a request for reconsideration for Project number two-oh-two-two-zero-zero-one-five-six-A. Richard, can you tell us a little bit more about that one, as we consider this?
Sure, yeah, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the board, this is a request by Tracy Crane to reconsider your, your action taken on file number, uh, the project number two-zero-two-two-zero-zero-one-five-six-A, which was an appeal of, of approval of a, a secondary detached dwelling that was in an existing home, if you recall. And it looks like there have been facts prepared for your consideration today.
That's that one where they, where they wanted to, to get the, uh, construction and the materials that were to be used for the additional dwelling unit.
Exactly, as you're sharing, yes.
Architectural design, and, and that was accomplished, was it not?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the, the original, the property owner, the original applicant did submit us a, a packet with, uh, with those, uh, architectural characteristics and colors and elevations, and that was approved by you at, at a later meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm looking at, um, the request for reconsideration, uh, by Mr. Crane, and, um, he, he doesn't identify any specific deficiencies, just calls him out. And then a couple of his other points are actual legal arguments. And, um, then he states that we failed to address architectural compatibility and materials, which we did not. We considered those. Um, and then he also states that we did not determine the definition of dwelling. We did determine the definition of dwelling. Um, and then finally, uh, he believes that, um, the code needs clarification or revision, but we would welcome his comments as we're updating our code right now. So, based on, um, what I see his points are, um, I'm going to deny the request for consideration for this project two-zero-two-two-zero-zero-one-five-six-A.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So, on point one, it, uh, it says that, uh, it doesn't identify any specific deficiencies, but it, uh, appears to make legal arguments regarding the board's decision. Well, wouldn't, if we made a decision based on incorrect law, wouldn't that be a deficiency? Or is he just making, in your opinion, making legal arguments in a more broad sense?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Chris Davidson, yeah, it appears he focuses on the, the legal aspects of, of, of the action that you took rather than focusing on what the code calls for deficiencies in, in the record or the things that you considered. Does it point out anything that was, um, I guess, lacking or, or something that could have affected your decision, just more of a legal arguments?
We heard, uh, all the evidence. Uh, every, everyone had an opportunity to testify. Nobody was denied the opportunity to testify. He wanted to testify?
Mr. Chairman, Chris Davidson, that's correct, yes. We went through all, all of our public hearing processes. Everybody had their due process and a chance to, to address you and share their concerns, and, and as you recall, they, uh, the, the parents did focus at the, at the public hearing primarily on how that existing structure looked and appeared. And you were able to follow, follow it up with direction to provide more detail, and, and found that, uh, that was satisfied.
Did the applicant file an appeal as well, or was just the parent appeal?
So, Mr. Chairman, Chris Davidson, no, the, the original applicant did not, uh, file appeal. They received approval of their application, and then the neighboring kind of property owners were the ones that filed appeal.
All right, thank you.
Is this that one? Now, I know it wouldn't, it didn't enter into our discussion, but is this the one where the neighbors were suing for lack of, uh, following their restricted covenants or something?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there was some kind of, was it code enforcement on this issue? There was some kind of aspect.
Okay, is there-
Uh, just one more follow-up. So, did the, um, Tracy Crane, it, it saw the plans submitted by the original applicant, and so after seeing those plans, were they satisfied, or did they allege that it was still deficient?
Mr. Chairman, Chris Davidson, I didn't see Mr. Crane's specific response or comments to what was submitted, but it's my understanding that the, the neighboring property owners were expecting something even more, uh, when it comes to the appearance. But, uh, as far as our analysis, that what was submitted by the applicant met our, our requirements and, and our code and was approved.
Do they have, can they still appeal, or is this the final appeal?
So, Mr. Chairman, Chris Davidson, this would be the, essentially the last step with the county before they could appeal to, to District Court.
Okay, thank you.
Did they not have an architectural control committee in the, in their restricted covenants?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to recall. We've had so many of these.
I'm sorry.
They actually had a committee. I don't know if there was an active architectural control committee.
Well, that's the issue. They, 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 they had a, the, the restricted covenants called for an architectural control committee, but hadn't been active. They didn't have one.
Maybe correct.
I think. But anyway.
It was by recollection.
Yeah. Anyway, all right, I'll entertain a motion. You?
I already made it.
You made a motion. Did we get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got the second, uh, motion second to re, to reject, uh, the request for reconsideration for Project number two-zero-two-two-zero-zero-one-five-six-A. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, with that, we're in recess. Thank, thanks, everybody.